The Finance Committee meeting for September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five is called to order. Number one, public comment on any item on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll go right into discussion items. Two point oh one, the Babbitts memorandum of understanding. I'm not sure how you're taking this.
This is just an update on the MOU that we approved back in March. Essentially, we just want to clarify the scope of the project. So the initial MOU had it as just a factory building, which was on three one five Columbia. The clarification is that includes both the satellite campus on Columbia Street as well as renovations on the main campus. There's also an update about the flexibility of how the districts can pay for the project. Since the approval of the MOU, the business office teams have gotten together and, you know, there's an option to pay with cash in some instances. Option of going through the Babbitts Authority for repayment or getting a loan out. Or we can pay based on a work completed or any combination that really fits the needs of the district. So we just want to make sure that that's clarified in there. The other thing that I want to highlight is that the sixty day notice period does not apply based on our conversations with our solicitor. So the bids are due to be received sometime in December of two thousand and twenty five, construction early two thousand and twenty six. At which time, we plan on selling the Babbitts Building to the Babbitts Authority. And then we will finalize our plans to move forward with the renovations and what option we choose in terms of financing. So any questions on MOU?
Any questions? I'll just note that it did go through the Babbitts Joint Operating Committee two weeks ago without comment and voted on unanimously. So, all right.
Just process question, does it have to go anywhere else or is this the last step?
It'll go to Saucon Valley and to Northampton, but the board recommended it, so.
Yeah, I believe it's going to go in October.
Sorry.
I believe that Northampton's voting in October and Saucon Valley should be voting in October as well.
I understand there's another Oversight Committee meeting tonight at Babbitts as well. It's separate from us. Just talking about the financials of the, of the, yes, the authority, that's it, yeah. Now, I think they're also just discussing financial arrangements of the payment, so that's going concurrently as of tonight.
Yeah, the authority actually is the group that issues the debt on behalf of the school of the representative district. So there, we have our own authority, which we're getting rid of now that our swaps are gone, but it's similar to that. It's volunteers that were appointed by the sending districts to represent us with the authority, but that's.
Wonderful, that's moving the process along, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on two point oh one? All right, that is on for the agenda items, we'll talk about it then. Two point oh two, the Liberty Athletic Club agreement for some scoreboards at Liberty.
Sir Rashudi, actually, four point oh two and four point oh three go together and are the culmination of a lot of hard work over the last few months to come up with a plan and support to replace the scoreboards inside the Memorial Gym at Liberty High School. You may remember last spring, I believe, we saw a third party give a presentation to our, to our committee, which for different reasons didn't pan out. But that only made us more determined to go in and find another partner, in this case, the Liberty Athletic Club, to join forces with us to be able to secure those scoreboards. So the agreement that you see in front of you related to the proposal and the costs of the, of the, of the different scoreboards really boils down to a big thank you to the Liberty Athletic Club, which agreed over the seven years of the purchase of the scoreboard to reimburse the Bethlehem Area School District over those seven years, I believe it's thirty thousand dollars a year, so that at the end of the purchase of the scoreboard, the Athletic Club will have fully sponsored that purchase. In the meanwhile, the advertising revenue that can be derived by the Athletic Club, which would have the right to issue those, those advert ads, will help them repay the, the school district for laying out the money for the scoreboard. So I want to thank Mr. Terry, who is the president of the LAC. I want to thank Mr. Harris, who did all of the research on the different scoreboards, the different methods of being able to arrange the payment. Whenever you arrange a three-party agreement, there's a lot of Ts to cross and a lot of Is to dot. And I thank them and Mr. Aristocizian for his patience, for their patience as we work through all of the details. Also, thank you to Mrs. Bachman and Mr. Stein, who worked also with the technical specifications, because there is technology to run behind this scoreboard. The scoreboard does, has to be mounted in the, in the gymnasium, so that's a challenge for our, our facilities group. But whether it's the agreement, the financing, or the implementation, this is a big step forward for our, for Liberty High School and for the Memorial Gym. The boards will be able to be used not only in their traditional sense, but because of how adaptable they are, they may be able to be used during physical education class or school assemblies held in the gym. So there are really a lot more potential. And when the league issues the requirement for a shot clock in the, in the upcoming basketball season, we'll be able to roll right into that. So the agreement shares the, all the arrangements for how that, that purchase takes place and how the reimbursement takes place, who does what. And then you see four point oh three are the, the bidders for it. And we decided to go with digital scoreboards, a leading vendor in the field. Mr. Aristocizian, is there anything else I missed in this, in either of these two items? Mr. Harris or Mr. Terry, you are integral members, is there anything I missed? They've worked really hard to be able to get this done, so we thank them both.
Any questions, Dr. White?
Thank you, just add a question of the mounting and display. Will there be some kind of a protective gate over the digital scoreboard for nefarious balls that hit at it?
So all of the lights on these boards and gymnasiums are actually recessed. So the front coat is actually the protection itself and all of the other things are recessed inside that. There are also panels, so that if a panel goes out, it's not one big screen. There are many different panels that are attached magnetically. So we will have spare panels as part of our package when we open up the board.
Just a second, unrelated question, thirty thousand dollars a year for seven years? Okay, how many hot dogs is that?
It's a, it's a lot of hot dogs. One of the, one of the things that it's nice us to be a part of this is the additional ad revenue.
Right.
If we were just selling hot dogs to sell, we would be, kind of, we feel like we would be shortchanging our ads. We would not be able to provide the same programs and the supports that we typically provide. So we believe with the additional ad revenue, we will at least equal what we would normally be able to raise, if not exceed that.
And then a related question to the ad revenue. Will there be a package for sale of, of ads? And is that the Athletic Club running the, the actual pitching for the ads and pulling that all together? How does that work?
Scoreboard Media is a company that is going to be selling the advertising for us. It's a split, it's a fifty fifty revenue split, so we would get half, it would get half. But they're going to be sending a representative from their company here to get into Lehigh Valley, into the Bethlehem School District community to sell those ads.
Okay, just the timing of the question. As a, as someone who sits on the Bethlehem Chamber Board and has been encouraging our local businesses to understand the value of advertising in the theater playbooks, things like that, there was a disconnect of awareness with a vast amount of chamber members of businesses, small and, and medium and large. And I would hope that you could encourage them, if they're not from the Lehigh Valley, to make those connections so that word gets out to our local businesses, because I think that will be a very attractive offer for many. And I just happen to be going to a board meeting tomorrow, and I'd love to be able to report to them about this opportunity. Okay, thank you, thank you.
And all advertising will have to comply with school board advertising policy.
Any other questions, comments? All right, that moves us into our information items. Three point oh one, budget update. I don't think there is much of one, but.
No, three months out, still no real budget in place. There were some articles recently that indicated that a budget is imminent, it will be right up, but no details. Oh, sorry about that. No details have been released and to my knowledge, nothing is passed as of yet. I can tell you that the Act One Index has come out and it's three point five percent. Our estimate is roughly four point three percent, so that's, that's the baseline for next year. But nor will update in terms of the budget numbers from the state.
Mr. Rashudi, I would say there's a growing frustration among the Pennsylvania Superintendent's Group and School Boards Association, especially as expenses continue for school districts while state funding hasn't come in. As you know, about thirty percent of our revenue comes from state sources. But we're operating as if a hundred percent of it is coming in and waiting for the rest of it to come in. So there is a foot across the Commonwealth, at least trying to express the frustration that we have. And for one particular area of frustration is our payments to charter schools, which don't seem to have the issue of waiting and having their funding delayed because it comes from the contributing districts that are still writing the checks. So we, we may, as an administration, be recommending to the board, you know, some resolution to support the idea that everybody has shared sacrifice during a budget impasse, both the public school districts and the charter schools that we support.
Dr. Beck, coolly.
Just because we're now in mid-September, and I know we talked in August about when we start to get worried, because I know some school districts have already been forced to take out loans to cover, you know, paychecks and immediate costs. You had mentioned October. I don't know if you had like October first in mind or October thirty first in mind, but now that we're sort of mid-September, I might just ask that question one more time.
Well, in my mind, it's still October. Main reason for that is because that's when we start going into our financing issues. It'll take two to three months to get something rolling. We're trying to determine what to do with our cash flow, because right now taxes are coming in, so we're, we're in a healthy position. The taxes aren't going to keep coming in past December. So if you think there's going to be about two to three months in order to go out and get some kind of financing, we need to start thinking about it in October. Depending on the timing at a Babbitts sale, there's actually some revenue that we can get back, which the resolution we spoke to earlier would help. Not a lot of revenue, but that's three and a half million. We do have some reserves we can rely on. I guess what I'm saying is we're going to cast a pretty wide net and see what option works best as we evaluate. Next steps, hopeful that we won't have to get there in October. Budget issues with the state will be solved.
Ms. Levy.
Dr. Silver, could you just reiterate the fact that charter schools do not have to wait? Could you just reiterate that so that the public knows, because that is so important?
Charter schools are, are funded by the tuition payments of the school districts that send students there. And, and that goes, that expenditure just keeps going on regardless of whether state funding is coming in. So it would be reasonable for the Bethlehem Area School District, if it gets thirty percent of its revenue from state sources, to say, you know, maybe the thirty percent of the charter school revenue should stay with the Bethlehem Area School District as well, so that we all have equal sacrifice during this slowdown. Now, there's, there's more conversation than that, but to express the frustration that school districts and school boards are having across the state, just simply seeing checks continuing to be written in full amount going out to schools, when the financing of our own schools, we have to ask question, is, are we okay through October? Are we okay after that? It just seems to be a fair practice to hold everybody accountable in the same system.
Dr. Rick Pulling.
Along similar lines, and also getting annoyed along those ways, that we have obligations, in many cases unfunded mandates by the state to comply with particular things or report on particular things or see to particular things. And I don't know if the net that you're casting is looking at some of those things if revenue has not come in from the state for, you know, a full quarter. If there are cost savings in sort of holding on what those may be if those resources to support that work isn't coming in. Again, just equally annoyed, so, asking.
Thirty percent of our charter school payments is not a small amount. Especially when we're looking at non-existent state funds coming in and us potentially having to use cash or, or get a loan. I think it's, it calls for equal sacrifice among the charter industry. industry.
Professor.
Just ballpark, what's our monthly charter tuition?
About three and a half, four million.
Times, well, halfway September, but call it three months, you're looking somewhere around 10 to 12 million, 30% of that, that's, you know, three million dollars, it's real money. And then that would just be withheld until a budget's passed, and then back pay would go out, just like our back pay.
As soon as we receive the funding from the state, the resolution would sunset and the rest would would go there. That seems to be what our attendants and school boards are having. There aren't a whole lot of tools at our disposal. Normally, if a school district does not make payment on charter school tuition bills, the state deducts it right out of the school's subsidy. And we're not getting any subsidy, so there's nothing to deduct it out of. So in a way, it's coming out of our from our taxpayers. Hence, a need to express our concern.
We did have a notice recently come out from Peasars that allows us to only make our district portion of payments. So even moving forward in terms of unfunded mandates, we're only going to be making 50% of the payments for Peasars. You know, for a district our size, our payments are roughly 10 and a half million dollars. So you're talking about five and a half, six million that we save in an effort to preserve cash flow, which is one of those factors we look at. So we are looking at all different options right now and seeing what's the best way to move forward without sacrificing any of the services.
All right, any other comments or questions on that? All right, we'll move into the agenda items for our September 22nd, 2025 regular board meeting. 4.01, 4.02, and 4.03 were discussed. Any other questions on those? Moving into 4.04, write off of outstanding receivables.
Yeah, we had some discussions last year about what to do with some of the receivables that are out there. We agreed that we're going to turn over unpaid balances to the credit agency in order to recover some of that bad debt. At this point in time, we have about 382,000 outstanding. We're taking a look at those items that aren't on a payment plan, that the credit agency was unable to make any collection efforts on, and we're asking for the board to make a concession and write off those bad balances, because we don't think that they're going to be collectible. Some of these balances go back to 2015, and the further it goes back, the likelihood of collection goes down. So we don't think that there's a high likelihood of collecting any of these, and we should either write them off or have an allowance for bad debt. I would recommend we just write them off.
There's also a cost of resources of time and money to do the collection, so is it just better to just say stop, so we don't keep spinning our wheels on and spending more money without getting it back? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Patrick.
Totally agree with what you just said, Dr. White. I have a real issue with the 39,000 for former employees with not repaying their tuition loans. Is there, I mean, obviously, you can't even just garnish a paycheck just because it's not going to cover a tuition bill, but is there anything else that can be done about that? Because I feel that also sends a bad message to future folks.
So about the bad debt, no, because we don't know where they work. We we don't have the authority to withhold anything from them now. Moving forward, we are withholding ones from the last paycheck, so we're trying to get ahead of it on a proactive basis. Given the age of these items, it's very difficult to know even where those employees live currently.
Anything that an employee signs or that that they did sign, because obviously you've changed how things are done, is is any of that enforceable? Like, any like legal action can be taken on that?
So technically, yes. I don't know what the statute of limitations are on some of those items. I could tell you that we've gone to pour on several of these old outstanding items, and yes, we got a judgment, but there was no force of the payment. The language in our new contracts is more enforceable, and like I said, we're taking steps to actually recover some of that, some of that tuition loan money when an employee leaves the district right out of their last paycheck.
Ms. Levy.
So, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, when you write off this money, do you put it on, is it part of your taxes, whereas you you show that you had a loss on your taxes? And is there some, do you guys get money back in some form or fashion when you put it on your taxes?
No.
So you've you lose everything, every, all of this money is gone?
So these expenses were incurred at any point, whether it was in 15, 16, 17, at the time of the expenses when we recognized it. Now we're trying to collect it back. There was no impact on the taxes, because we don't file taxes.
Oh, okay.
All right, can you just explain what the process is currently to close that we go through for collecting debts?
So our collection process starts with an invoice, followed up with a phone call. Generally, there are several emails. I can't tell you what the collection process for the 15, 16, 17 of these older items has been. Last year, we did turn that over to the credit tech for collection efforts. Some employees have started a payment plan as a result of that. The students weren't really accepted. There's a couple of students on here that, you know, owe $300, $400 because they either lost a band equipment, a uniform, a computer, what have you. Sort of smaller dollar amounts haven't been actively pursued from credit tech perspective based on the age.
Yeah.
There's some rat to knows on here, which we should have written off a long time ago. Essentially, that means that we we were going to provide information for a set fee, and you know, you might be $70, $80. The person said, I'm not going to pay it, and we kept it as a receivable. So some of this is housekeeping items. There are gym rental fees. We've stopped renting those third parties that haven't paid. We've stopped renting to them. So we've been proactive in that sense, but if they're not paying, there's not a whole lot we can do about that.
Yeah, and what you're saying, a lot of these, I know the statute of limitations on most debts in Pennsylvania is four years. Now, there are some contractual things that extend the statute of limitations and when payments are made, but have we ever looked at potentially using a debt collection law firm or trying to package and sell some of our debts for pennies on the dollar that are uncollectible?
We had conversations last year. There weren't a lot of parties interested in it, because we have a high volume but low dollar amounts. We worked with a solicitor, refined the language that the employee signed for the tuition loans, but other than that, we haven't done a whole lot with the student perspective.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments on 4.04? All right, we'll move on to 4.05, the, I think I don't want to move here, but the 403B plan.
Yeah, so TSAG is the plan admin. Essentially, they're responsible for compliance and admin services of all of our district accounts. They don't charge any of the employees or the district for these fees. All of their fees for compliance work is paid for by the providers, essentially the investment companies. They recently sent us a notification that they would like to increase the rates, not to us, not to the employees, but to the providers. So the investment providers will be billed a fee moving forward of $27 per year, and in 2028 and moving and after, it'll be $30 per year per member.
All right, any questions on that? I'll be on for the next board meeting. 4.06, award of bids for oil, grease, and fluids. Fun stuff.
Not much to add.
Not much there, yes. 4.07, source for nurses agreement.
Yeah, this is a student that transferred into our district, needs one-on-one support. We were able to contract with an agency to provide us nurses at the rates that you see up there. We believe that it's going to cost about $110,000 to provide the services on a daily basis, and the funds will be reimbursed through access.
Okay, any questions on that? 4.08, settlement agreement with the PA Leadership Charter School for Educational Services.
This goes back to 2016, 17 school year. Shortly after I started, there was a notification that we need to engage in a lawsuit with the charter. The tuition rate was not calculated correctly. We've since reviewed the items and have come to a consensus that we can settle this claim for about $383. And so the cost of continuing the fight doesn't seem to warrant the claim.
All right. Any questions on that thing? Seems a little meaningless, but all right, $383. 4.09, Colonial Intermediate 20 Special Educational Contracts, normal housekeeping item here we do every year or two years.
It's an annual item.
Annual, yes. Any questions on that? All right. PA School Boards Association Officer Candidates, do we have the candidates yet?
Those are the candidates up there, and in most cases, there's one candidate for each position. So if you can select the candidates that are for president, president-elect, and the two insurance trustees, and then we will vote on that for next meeting.
All right, any questions on that? 4.11, Burke One Agreement for Homestead Mailing.
Annual agreement to mail out the homestead applications, and the price has not changed from last year.
Okay. And 4.12, renewal of server and data backup system. Questions on that? All right, all those items will be on the agenda for September 22nd, regular board meeting. Moving into number five, public comment on any item. Anyone here to talk about anything? Oh, sorry.
Just a quick question back to, where were we, 4.09, the the payment going to the intermediate unit? Another portion of our budget and stream of funding that comes from the state is for special education expenses. And I know overall in the big bucket, so state covers about 30% of our expenses, what portion of special, like obviously, these these services are getting paid for continually, but just curious sort of the impact, particularly on special education support, the state budget delay has on our district.
Well, it's hard to say. I use about 16 million of our budget. When you look at special ed as a whole, it's about 58 million. Some of those are provided by direct services, some of those are provided by our our staff. Can we do some kind of partnership with the IU where we delay payments? Possibly, but we haven't really explored that. In terms of the state funding, only about $10 million comes in, so we spend 58 to get 10, somewhat disproportionate.
That's an overall budget, let alone a delayed budget concern. I know that comes up every year, that those, the support from the state, not to mention from the federal government for special education services, is a tiny fraction of the services that we provide.
All right, no problem. Any other questions on the agenda items? All right, now we'll move into courtesy of the floor. Anyone for courtesy of the floor on any any item? Seeing none, open forum, anything? All right, we'll adjourn for a minute, go into HR.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 15th.
We decided there's no one here that can see the screen in the public and no one on camera can see it, so we're just going to go through the one item. Thank you, though. Appreciate it.
September 15th, 2025, Board Human Resource Committee Meeting. First up, courtesy of the floor, for agenda items only, seeing none. Next up, discussion items, 2.01, Board Policy 113.4, confidentiality of special education records and personally identifiable information, second reading.
This is the second reading for this policy. I have not received any information from the board members or if anybody had given the Special Education Department any thoughts. So with that being said, we'll have this, just move it to the third reading and a vote next Monday.
Perfect. Any questions or comments on that? Okay, next up, 2.02, CSN LTS contracts.
I am going to pass out a sample.
Thank you.
School nurses are one of the positions within school code that actually has the ratio of students, if one student or one CSN or 1,500 students.
The district currently has 14 CSN positions within its budget. After COVID, there were three additional positions added to make up that 14. Over the last two years, we have had issues filling those positions with certified school nurses and have had to resort to what's called emergency certing, the and have had to resort to what's called the emergency certing, the CSNs. And it's ultimately important because of the student to CSN ratio. This contract that is before you incorporates a lot of the information that is found on the PDE CSPG staffing guidelines as far as what the requirements are for LTSs. We issue the CSN LTSs an O one emergency permit, which comes with educational responsibilities. And since thi, this group of individuals is doing the district a favor, part of it is to provide them tuition reimbursement. We do not do tuition reimbursement for any other LTSs, but we also don't have the, the student ratio along with that. What the contract before you stipulates, that they are responsible for repayment of that and the breakdown if they would leave the district. But again, this is also a promotion to enable to fill those vacancies that we have had. The programs, all five of the individuals that are currently in that, two have actually got their certificates over the summer, is twelve credits beyond their bachelor's degree or their master's degree for their RN certificate. So again, it comes out to a little over six thousand dollars for each individual that we would be putting out. But that also comes with them at least staying with the district for years or paying back the tuition that they would owe. It also has a clause in there that lets them know that if they are not successful in passing the praxis exam, that they are no longer employed by the district. It's not that we're going to find them another nursing position at a lower level. This is for them to take the CSN position.
Any questions or comments on this? Dr. Rick Pullen? Just thank you for being creative and thoughtful in this way because there have been particular positions over the last five or so years. I'm thinking of bus drivers that were so hard to hire for a significant portion of time. And if nurses are clearly a key need in our schools. And so I just commend you for thinking strategically about how to make the position more attractive or easier to fill. And, you know, keep us posted on how it goes.
We will be putting five on, if there, if you're in agreement with doing this, we will put five contracts on next week's board agenda for your approval.
Thank you for that. Anything else for discussion items?
Yes, I would like to add one discussion item. I'm going to pass this out. Last week, in executive session, we talked about negotiations with certain collective bargaining groups as well as the meet and discuss with the-
Did you make this one, too?
Act ninety-three instructional meet and discuss as well as the non-instructional meet and discuss. We had talked about entering into an agreement with the Pennsylvania School Boards Association for the instructional meet and discuss, as we did with the non-instructional meet and discuss last year in preparation for upcoming meet and discuss sessions. So since last week, Shane Pagnati from PSBA has gotten me the contract for their services. So if there is no objection, I will add that also to next week's board agenda for approval so that they can start.
Any questions or concerns, Dr. White?
We are allowed to keep these copies for reflection, thank you.
Okay, seen, nothing else for discussion items?
That is correct.
Perfect. Any information items for this evening?
Yes, I would like to add one. I, I had a great segue over here about the bus driver trainees. We will be creating a contract very similar to the CSN for the bus driver trainees because not always do they get through the CDL. They get through the classroom portion, but the testing portion as well as the on-road portion, sometimes they're not very successful. But there's no clause in there that tells them what's going to happen if they do not pass their tests. So we want to clearly let them know what their, the expectations are about the time period that they would have to complete everything, and then what would happen if they are not successful with the test. So that is forthcoming.
Thank you. Dr. Schively.
With the test, do they, is it like, it's not like, like driver's ed where you can just try until you, you make it?
They get two tries and then, then they have to, there's a certain procedure and time period in which to wait, and then there's additional costs associated with that.
I see, but they could still do that?
They could, yes. But again, we don't want to be carrying people along because the trainees are actually being paid for that. So we don't want to just carry them on.
Gotcha.
Mrs. Levy?
Do you know if there's a practice test available for them to take?
There are, we have our own in-house trainers where if they would like to have additional time on the road before they actually go out and do the practical part of the test, they can ask for that as well.
Is there a written part of it?
There is a written test, and they have a sample booklet of questions.
Okay, great, thank you.
Dr. White?
Are they tested on the electric buses or on the diesel buses?
I believe they are, right now, all on the diesel buses.
Okay, so it, it remind me, how many electric buses we have?
I believe we have two now and we have ten on the way, but don't quote me on that, Mark, Mark's here.
Correct.
Oh, all right, I was paying attention.
Okay. And is, does the right to, or does the privilege of driving electric bus go in terms of priority of higher, how many years they've been driving, or how does that work?
I think the runs are bid and the electric bus, people who drive have some additional certifications or qualifications.
Thank you.
Did I speak correctly? Air brakes?
Air air brake, yes.
Any other information items for tonight?
No, that's all tonight.
Okay. So next up for agenda items for September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five regular board meeting, we're going to see four point zero one, Board Policy one one three point four, the confidentiality of special education records and personally identifiable information. Could be our third reading. And we're also going to see an agenda item for the PSBA contract for professional services.
And the CSN.
Yes, thank you, and the CSN LTS contracts as well. Anyone have any concern or questions on those for the agenda? Perfect. Courtesy of the floor for any item? Seeing none? Open forum for any topic?
Exec session for legal and personnel.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn? Thank you.